This is an, this is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska Governing Body. The City of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available by, for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on his agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Please, please.
Here.
Back there. Camper, Brett.
Eric.
Hi.
Eric.
Singleton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Here.
The first item this evening is a special presentation by the Seward Veterans of Foreign Wars, of Officer of the Year Award to Chief of Police Alan Baldwin. You're welcome to come forward. Do you want me, do you want me in this, or you're okay? You're fine.
You're lucky, sir.
Go ahead.
This way.
I would present it so your face isn't that way. Yeah, that's the best one. In case someone wants to take a picture.
Alright, so Mayor Ackerman, thank you very much for giving us the time to do this today. Chief Baldwin, this is a Law Enforcement of the Year Award for you, and from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, close four seven five five here in Seward. In recognition of almost twenty years of service as the police chief here in Seward County, or in Seward, and for all your continued support throughout the community, and your various organizations that you are involved in, the charities and fundraisers that you do throughout the city, and just all your time that you spend in the schools, talking with the children and stuff like that. Your impact is, it's such a positive impact and a high influence on all the children and all the people in this community. So we wanted to thank you and by awarding you as a Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Mel Varner for the, one that nominated me, as well as the VFW, but this is a real honor and a privilege to reach, see such a recognition for my service to the citizens of Seward. And I truly appreciate this honor. It's great.
Hold up a moment, come on. Would you mind joining us, Mayor? Any council members, if you'd like to join too, I can go over to see the pictures.
What's that? Uh-huh, sorry.
Oh, I know what it is.
You killed it, didn't you?
Didn't fail at all.
How you even charge that?
You might help it all.
She hooked up the high, the high speeds, the internet, yeah.
We don't have Roadrunner, we have Gerbil.
Organ.
Organize.
I was thinking.
Yeah.
He disconnected and he's reconnected.
I'll go ahead and continue till we get to. Still not working? Okay. Item number two is consideration of approval of draft minutes of February third, 2015.
Move approval?
Sorry.
The motion and a second, is any further discussion? Sign down, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you may release your bet, Brett Pyking will be presented.
Item number three, consideration of consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
The motion and a second, is any further discussion? Yes, John?
There is a claim for my employer's solicitor's name.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sign down, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you may release, Brett Pyking will be presented.
John, did you want to keep trying on the internet deal? Because I guess it's still not loading right?
Well.
It connects to the server that won't let us on the internet.
But he's doing the one and six plan.
I don't know if we got it here tonight.
Okay, well.
Because we were having problems with the internet, this is bouncing over the city hall.
Well then, we'll try and go without it for now. On the next item number four, this is the public hearing, seven P M. Presentation and discussion of one and six year street improvement plan. Now, go ahead, you can get the online starters off.
No, I will start off for John, since he is trying to fix the internet. My name's Julie Ogden, I work for J E O Consulting Group, one forty-two West Eleventh Street in Wahoo, Nebraska. The past couple of years, I have been helping John and Mel put together a presentation on the one and six year plan. They do assemble the plan, highlight the projects, we discuss different options. I help them prepare estimates, so that we can get the paperwork in. For those of you who remember, last year for this meeting, it was snowing and John was trying to present it, and all the fonts turned to Greek, and you couldn't read anything. So, we made it here to this, this year. I'm just gonna do some quick, oops, wrong click. There we go. Just do some quick reminders, the one and six year plan requirements. You do now have to file all of these documents online with the state. They are attempting to go paperless with this, although we still send Bonnie all the same paperwork we always did. We just have to scan it and file it with them. What this one and six year plan does is it shows any projects that you completed last year. It'll show projects with expenditures planned for this fiscal year, so the one we're currently in. And then it shows projects that you're planning to either start design or construct in the following five years after this fiscal year. So it's used somewhat as a budgeting tool for cities to help them plan for future improvements and budget for them. If a project needs to be constructed this year, and we don't have it currently on the one-year plan, it can be added at any time, it's one civil legal form, Mel knows how to do it, so we can do that. So let's say we had something occur, and we needed to do a repair on a, a street that was larger than your typical maintenance, maintenance repair. We could add it at that time to repave a portion of the street or do something like that. And as I said, the, the one and six year plan is to be used as a planning tool, but it does not commit you to, to actually construct any of the projects in the plan within that one year. So if you had something occur, or something got delayed, the projects in the one year can be carried over to another year. And as we start to go through this, you'll see a couple filmy faces on the, the plan. Keep clicking on the button. Okay. The completed project for this year, as everybody is aware, it was completed probably around school, time school started last year, if I remember correctly.
Middle of August.
Yep. Columbia Avenue, the one you've been working on a number of years, that was built. Here is a, a picture of the completed project. It was from Maple Street to Waverly Road, so Columbia is now paved all the way out to Waverly Road by the schools. That was a federal aid project, so you did receive eighty percent of all costs from the federal government. The, the city only had to pay twenty percent of that. That was the only project that you did complete last year. We have, I believe, nine projects on our one-year plan, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. The first two are ones that we had bid earlier, or actually late in 2014. The first is a block of paving on South Jack, Jackson Road. It is adjacent to the Hughes Brothers facility, kind of at their new entrance there. One of their new, their, one of their entrances they added. We will be paving it. It will be funded with local city fund, with a contribution from Hughes Brothers to help pay for their portion of it. The bids came in at a hundred and, little over a hundred and five thousand. Emmy Collins is your contractor, and they will start in April on either this block or the next project, which is Cedar Street. That is a block of paving from fifth to sixth, so right there off of Highway fifteen. This one also has a stormwater element included to help temporarily store some stormwater in a basin that we will actually give design and will construct to help alleviate some of the stormwater issues downstream hopefully, until such time that the city can afford to, to upgrade those facilities. This is a hundred percent city funded, and the, the project costs for that one were a hundred and seventy-three thousand four sixty, four, four and six, excuse me. Again, Emmy Collins will be building that. I don't know if they're gonna start on Cedar or Jackson first, or if they'll bring two crews in and knock them both out at once. We should know that here in the next month when we have the pre-con. So, I, actually, those are the only two projects on your one-year plan that you are committed to, because you have entered into an agreements with the contractor. The next in prior.
Is there a thing you can do on that, when you do that report, put the size of the street? If it's a twenty-five feet or thirty-five feet?
Those, those were both twenty-eight, I believe, curving up.
That'd be nice to add that.
Okay, yep, we can, I'll make note of that for next year.
If those are approximately the same size, what's, uh, what's bringing in the additional cost on the Hughes Brothers side? It's like seventeen grand more than the other.
The, well, actually Cedar is more than Hughes Brothers.
Cedar, Cedar's more expensive, because there's a storm, storm sewer involved.
Well, because we're building a.
And a detention cell.
Oh, I can't do this upside down. Hold on. Let me go back. Yeah, because we have that detention cell on Cedar, in that empty lot that the city owns. So what we're really doing is, is we're excavating a large amount of dirt, and we'll, we're redoing a little bit of storm sewer in between that two houses.
So am I reading this wrong? Because the, the spreadsheet that's in here, and I could be reading it wrong. The Hughes Brothers portion has an estimated construction cost of forty-seven five. Cedar Street is thirty grand.
You, let me see what spreadsheet you're looking at. That was last year's. Yeah. Because it was from twenty-fourteen.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that was.
So these are outdated costs?
Those, yeah, those were outdated costs. I, and I didn't print out any of, any of those spreadsheets. John, you don't have any of your copies of yours to be, if you can hand out? John has the updated one that was presented.
I was reading here, twenty-fifteen. It's actually twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, it's, they'd be, we're calling this the twenty-fifteen one-year plan, and then the, the five-year plan is twenty-sixteen. So, the, John will make copies for everybody of that spreadsheet, so you have that in front of you. The next project on your priority list is your Seward hike bike trail. This was on last year's plan as well. It will complete the loop around the other three sides of the city, the south, the west, and the north. It is funded eighty percent by the federal government, which helps when you see that four million dollar price tag. So your city share is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. That estimate is still good, from what I'm visiting with your design engineer. And it, it's estimated currently to be left by N D O R in twenty-eighteen, which, which likely means it'll be constructed in twenty-nineteen. Here is the, the approximate route that the engineer is looking at right now. This is not finalized. I believe they're still doing some environmental studies, and also visiting with some of the property owners about the potential route. So this is just, this is still in, in concept.
So when it comes to the hike biker trail, who's figuring in doing the dirt work, the tree removal, is that figured out on this?
That is all included, my understanding from talking to your design engineer, that would all be included in that four million dollar construction cost.
And who's gonna do the dirt work and removing the trees? Is this contracted out, or is this the city?
It'd be part of, it'd be part of, right now, it's planned to be part of the contract with the contractor. As you move forward with the project, that would be something that you could visit with the state to see if there'd be any benefit. If the city forces did it, if that could help offset your cash contribution to the project. With federal aid, they don't always look at in-kind, in lieu of your cash contribution. So what it sometimes does is just, it reduces both parties. It, you know, reduces the overall project cost, so the eighty, twenty total split goes down.
I have a question.
Yep.
Clear to the north end, right before Waverly Road is, is that, uh, that goes across the farm ground there, correct?
This, yeah, and I got this map from the design engineer, so I'm not, I don't, you know. I know this is their concept, I know there are some concerns with some locations of this proposed route, which is why it's not finalized. I don't know if John has.
Yeah.
More information, but I assume, not, he's talking about like right up here.
Right, we did have a landowner request that went across here, he thought it would be better, but his daughter didn't think it was such a good idea. And so, it's being proposed right now, and we haven't went into negotiations, but it'll go straight up to Waverly and straight across like that.
Our next project is the Carol K Boulevard project. Constructing the street from Bader to East Hillcrest Drive. This also is a federal aid project, about three tons of a mile of new street. This one is proposed to be thirty-one foot wide, back curb to back a curb. The city's total estimated construction costs are just over eight hundred thousand dollars, with a city share of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. This is estimated to be left by N D O R in twenty-sixteen. From talking to N D O R, since we are the design engineer for this one, visiting with them, our goal is to have our final design plans completed by June. So that way, if they can find funding this year, it may go a little, little sooner, but they, at this point, can't guarantee it. So that's, that's where we're at on that one.
We will, we will be notified when the final design is.
Yeah, my, my under, I guess my estimate is that we'll probably have another public discussion and review of the plans. It may be more of an open house style this time, rather than the formal presentation we did last time. So that way, people can come take a look. The next project on your priority list is Waverly Road. It's my understanding, work on this has not yet started, but from talking to John and Mel, we may be looking at trying to start engineering in your next fiscal year, if we can, if the budget allows for that. We're currently estimating reconstruction of Waverly Road from Highway fifteen all the way to the Plum Creek Bridge, that the county recently replaced, to be about one, one point five million dollars. I believe we would be looking at what we call a three-lane roadway section there, so it'd probably be about thirty-eight, thirty-nine feet total width. That would allow a three-lane each direction with a center turn lane to allow for, for turning traffic into the school sites and any future development. Right now, if we start engineering in the next fiscal year, potentially, but depending on budget, looking at maybe construction around twenty-eighteen is what we're currently looking at. But this is in the, the one-year plan, and just in case you guys want to start engineering earlier than next fiscal year. New one-year proj, new project to the plan this year, and we put it in the one-year project, is the entrance to the Orshelin and Dollar General right off of Highway fifteen. That is seeing some recent damage, and I know that was something that John and Mel had brought up and wanted to include in the one-year plan. This would be just replacing the drive, the drive, the dual-drive access itself. So construction costs are at thirty-five thousand dollars. And I believe there was the potential maybe for city.
City would be doing, we could project it out.
City crews would be doing this, so there wouldn't be any engineering requirement or contractor requirement. Probably the only requirement is you just have to get a permit from N D O R, since you're gonna be right off that. And then phasing it, so that access can be provided to those businesses. Which is wide enough that that shouldn't be an issue. Twin Oaks Road in the southern part of the city. This would be just overlaying Twin Oaks Road from reg, from Progressive to about two hundred feet west. This would be local funded, or there might be the potential of using some TIF funds, if some of those are available. We're estimating about twenty-five thousand dollars of construction cost for that asphalt overlay, and perhaps even getting that accomplished yet this summer. And then this is our final project in the one-year plan. It would be East Hillcrest Drive. This would be from East Ridge Drive down to the Plum Creek Bridge. So this would also be coordinated with the intersection that will be building with Carol, the new Carol K roadway. This would also include a pedestrian access, whether that's a sidewalk or a trail. I think that's, it'll yet to be determined from, from discussions with the college. But get, have a pedestrian way down to the trail for the, the college city fund project, and currently estimated to be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This would be two lanes, so it'd be probably twenty-seven foot wide back a curb to back a curb. We would go with an urban section when we rebuild it, so that it somewhat matches the rest of Hillcrest Drive. Just maybe not quite as wide, because at this point, we're not seeing the need for that on-street parking. Sometimes we're narrow up the road, and we save that road.
Can I figure in on cutting that hill down a little bit, let me do that? Right by the college?
Probably not, because I don't think we're looking to.
We're going through the road base that's there, it'll increase the cost of the road significantly from here.
And we were looking to leave the, the intersection with East Ridge Drive alone at this point, too. And I think that, you know, if we were to look at cutting that hill down a little bit, we would get into the, some of those side streets a little bit more. But that would be something that definitely, when you start engineering, if there's some, some concerns with that, I would recommend we look at it before you get too far into design, so you can make sure it's addressed. Now we'll move on to our six-year projects. These I did not go into, there's quite as much detail on. I do have construction costs, if there's any there that you would like to know about. But what we're looking at is Park Avenue, between Eleventh Street and South to Twelfth Street. That would be a co, painting of that roadway, with concrete and likely curving gutter, but we're not a hundred percent sure. One side might be curving gutter, one side, the side with the drainage way may not, just because it'll, it'll save us a little bit. So that would be one project. The next is Pine Street, which we've, on the actual plan, have broken up into three different projects for each block, but on the list, I just listed them from Birch to Cottonwood, so there would be three blocks there. Again, converting that to a, a concrete roadway. Spruce Street there, kind of in that, now we're back down into the, the progressive road area with Spruce Street and Walmett Street, both looking at some concrete painting in those sections of the community. Next one would be East Hillcrest Drive, so this would be a resurfacing of.
Before we get to East Hillcrest Drive, can I mention one thing? Pine Street, when we did the, the, uh, Twin Oaks TIF addition, when we did the TIF on this project, we, we kept the tax increment on, on that project fairly low, so that we could pay off a portion of the TIFs relatively fast. And then the city will capture the remaining portion of the TIF off those lots. We have, we went from nineteen thousand to thirty-five thousand as increments. Once a building is placed on any of those lots, the value of that lot will probably go to a hundred and fifty thousand, and the city is intending to capture that TIF, and that will maybe that we'll use for Pine Street.
Well then, I'll note that, so we can make sure we have that on the mixture. East Hillcrest, so this would be the balance of East Hillcrest from East Ridge Drive, where we talked about rebuilding the road, all the way back to Highway fifteen. We'd be looking at resurfacing, likely with asphalt, but we may, there are some options for concrete overlays, too, if you want to keep, keep that look, so it's consistent throughout the corridor. Columbia Avenue is also another street resurfacing project, from Lincoln up Avenue all the way up to Highway thirty-four. Again, ass, likely asphalt, but we would, you know, if, if oil prices start to climb back up, we'd want to look at that concrete overlay for cost, cost purposes. Jackson Avenue would be another resurfacing project from fifth to seventh. And then the final project on our one and six-year plan is East Ridge Drive, from Bradford to Roboot Street. This would be, look like we made look at a gap paving district, so that way, a part, a portion of the street paving cost could be assessed back to property owners, should the, the council want to do that. And then that, the balance would be local funding for intersections. So that is the summary of our one and six-year projects. Yes, Mayor?
A question, when we, when you, um, you mentioned the project on North Columbia from Lincoln two highway. I know that area pretty well, from where I grew up. Used to be brick at one time. It seems like with those, that curbing is very old. And as you keep adding layers and layers, that curbing gets shorter and shorter. I mean, does, I mean, at some point, is, is the curbing gonna be rebuilt up? Or do you strip it down at some point?
Our recommendation probably would be is to remove whatever asphalt you've got there, mill that back off, and then, and then put new asphalt down, so we wouldn't.
Does it only, not like my roof, where I just keep putting more layers?
I, yeah, would not recommend. You know, if you've got a better base, but you, let's say your, your curves are significantly damaged, you can, with a resurfacing project, also rebuild your curves. And then what we do is we build those up to where your asphalt level's gonna be, so then you would have your full curving other height, that would be another potential option.
And that, I call that curbing, is pretty old. I mean, and it's probably narrower than what you would use now for curving typically, so.
Yeah, that would be something that when we get that closer, moved up to the one-year plan, we may want to do a walk-through of that.
I don't live anymore, so I don't care, I live in my hometown. My parents, my parents live, they can get, they can figure it out.
I, also, I don't think nineteen's gonna make it to twenty-twenty. That would be going back and re-chipping the ceiling east.
Oh, on Seward Street?
Yeah, East Seward Street.
Oh, nineteen?
Yeah.
All right, John, what's probably gonna happen is I'll get a hold of Michael, so we're gonna have Michael come in probably next year, or the following year, and do a, do a resurface that. We need to go get that road ready.
If you go out there and look at it, we're gonna have that group of people probably sit in our council chambers again very soon.
Where are we? I've, I've already talked to Michael, Susan, if the weather breaks, she's gonna come and pick him up again.
Yeah, and chip, see, generally chip seals or armor coats.
Yeah.
Those don't, usually are considered more maintenance, so we don't always have to show them on, I mean, we generally don't show them on your maintenance, your plan.
That was always gonna be a problem, John.
Oh, I know that.
The shoulders, there is, if they have action, like your center, you may, may bend and lob, put a lot of asphalt, free rock in our center of the county, when you, you know, the summer, put a layer on it, but it's freezing thawing stuff, the shoulders are thawed.
But, you know, that group goes here many council meetings, and if they sit in here and look at it for twenty-twenty, they're gonna be showing up at our council meetings again.
We've done a lot of work throughout the summer of getting that, keeping it in shape, and it's a job. It's actually held up a lot better than we thought it would. If you remember when we started talking about the overlay to begin with, it was gonna be.
They started to show a lot of.
Yeah.
A lot of spots.
Yeah, so, and maybe what we're looking at there, instead of maintenance or overlay type of project in twenty-twenty, maybe that's more, we can figure a way to do more reconstructive.
I just think that probably should be in the one and six, at least you could show them that we're still looking at it.
I guess the other portion of the, the work that J E O does for the city is we do some mapping, that is, that and this plan will be made available on the city's website, as it has been the past couple of years. And this is harder to see, it looked better on my computer screen. But what we can do is you can, what the, the map is, is there's color codes for not only the city projects, but also the, the county projects within the City of Seward two mile jurisdiction. So, you know, here we're looking at Waverly Road, you can see this, this is shown in a yellow color. Kind of seems, it's shown in a yellow color. That would be the city paving project. The county does have plans to do work on Waverly Road, I believe all the way out to what you guys call the Matsky Highway.
Matsky Highway.
Resurface that, you know, the bridge, I believe, has been completed, and then they're looking at doing a little bit of work on some roads to the north. County also has plans to do the extension about, of East Hillcrest out to Matsky Highway.
Hillcrest block.
So, this map will be available on site, you can kind of see, I don't really have the ability to zoom in here, but the little stars indicate bridge projects that the county is planning on doing within, within the corporate limits of the city. And then within this map, there is a legend, so we've identified our, our one-year proj, projects with red, our six-year projects with the yellow. And this would be our actual construction timeline, where we think, you know, so it's the year that we plan on building it, not necessarily it's in the one-year plan or the six-year plan, to try to help identify some of those. And then the bridge projects also, there was one we were showing in twenty-thirteen. I haven't got confirmation from the county, if they've actually built it yet. I've been working with our engineers to try to get that from the county. So we will get the county items updated. But this will be made available, along with the presentation that we have tonight, and the one and six-year plan documents will all be put, once approved by the council, on the city's website, so that the general public can go look at it at their leisure.
It'd be nice to see an updated map, too, because that's not an updated map.
Yeah, and this is our, you know, it usually takes Google a little while to get that aerial updated. So I will work on trying to get it, because I know we've got a, we've got a road here, that we don't.
Couple roads.
So that is what I've got for you tonight, are there any other questions? So that is what I've got for you tonight. Are there any other questions?
John, can you talk to the county, if you haven't already, and maybe go to one of their meetings and just kind of brief them on what the projects are? And I realize they can read the map as well, but it might be helpful just to let them know what we're working on, so they're not surprised by anything.
No, and we've been working with Russ, like the Waverly and Hillcrest, we have co-sites, if any project that we have that are handshake projects, we're going to work closely with you.
Well, just with the new cap, with the new commissioner, it might be helpful to bring them up to speed.
Is, John, is there any way we can, instead of going straight across there to Waverly with the trail, you know, keep kind of the aesthetics that we've kept with the trail next to the woods? Is there any way we can still continue to try to stay next to the woods, instead of going straight out?
Well, we're going to follow that one portion up to the woods property and then from there.
I'll get you a little back to that.
We're kind of locked off to the west, and we'll probably, we'll be following that.
Where you're going straight-
It's a high-powered mine's right in there.
Right.
And there really is no trees or anything in that area, period.
And that's why I was saying-
Except for the Nebraska State Tree, which is the Hughes Brothers case structure.
And that's why I'm saying, instead of going straight across there where you're talking, follow the creek bit, kind of like with the aesthetics that we've, you know, set now.
Yeah, that, the problem being is, Mr. Woods, is he doesn't listen to that.
And why can't we go a little further?
Further.
Trying to obtain the ground.
Well, we can with eminent domain, and we have ruled that out. But at this stage of the game, because of the rules and regulations, we have to do the alignment first, show the alternatives, and then at that alternative, we'll go to front the state, then the documents, and that's all to make our proposal. I, to tell you the truth, I thought it was kind of a slimmed-down deal, because most of that is just a ravine.
Right.
And it'll never be developed into housing, period. And I thought, you know, this is a good chance we're going to make some money for a ravine. They didn't want to hear about it. But, I'm not done.
Yeah.
Thank you. So unless there's any other questions from the council at this time? This is a public hearing, so I'll put up the public, for public comment, anyone from the public wish to comment on item number four? Seeing no one wishing to comment, I'll close the public hearing portion of this, or the public comment portion of the public hearing. Then we'll go to the council. Unless there are any other questions, I would, would ask someone to introduce the resolution.
I would like to, like I said, I would like to go ahead and make the motion, but to move nineteen into the one and six.
Did you accept your friendly amendment to your motion, including number twenty?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we have, we have a motion. Is there a second to his motion? No second, so the motion fails. Did you want to make a motion, or did you want to have? Could you explain one more time on that item? It's, it, I mean, my understanding is that John talked about there's going to be chip seal, once you've got an opportunity to talk to the firm about what makes sense. What would be the project then in, what, twenty-nineteen?
Well, what we had in there was either looking at a heavier-duty chip seal, or actually using some asphalt, servicing-
We're looking at an asphalt overlay, because it's just a little-
Okay. So, so it's not like nothing would happen between now and twenty-nineteen. The intention, the intent is to have some sort of a chip seal, but you typically don't put the chip seals on these. You typically do the more heavier-duty projects?
Yeah, generally, it's a project that's twenty thousand dollars or more.
Okay.
And that is not considered maintenance.
Okay.
And generally, chip seals, one, cost less than that, and two, are considered maintenance, because they're just microserves.
And John, will you be talking to the, the people in that area? Do you talk to the development?
Well, the first thing I'm going to do is figure out what the best, best method possible is to get us the most bang for the buck out there. And this is not going to go to twenty-nineteen. This will probably happen in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. But I have to know what I'm dealing with, its facts, as far as cost.
Okay, is that addressed your concerns?
And then it'll, it'll move up. Next year, it'll probably be on the one-year plan.
Right, I just feel that if it's going to happen in twenty sixteen, or say, twenty seventeen, that it should be in the one and six.
We can move it up.
That's all, I think-
It could be put in the six-year project.
I mean, it's not going to-
I think it would make them people out in that area that had all the concerns before, show to them that we are still reviewing that process out there for the future, and not put it on the back burner. Because, if you don't remember the council meetings we had-
Oh, I do.
Okay.
I can show you a whole stack of correspondence.
Yeah. I'd just like to show them that, put it on the one-six, don't put them out. Say you're twenty-twenty, show them that it's, it's in the works. I put it in the one-six.
But just to reiterate, we don't have to put a project of that scope in the plan, the one and six plan at all?
You, no, you wouldn't have to, however, depending on what John finds out when he meets with the company, if it's going to cost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, at that point, we, it would, we recommend it.
So if you put it in there, then it's in there, then it's in there in case, then it should be, the cost of that.
Or, you know, and even, I've had communities who put all their projects in there, even if they don't have to.
And just because it's in the one and six, don't mean we're going to do it.
Yeah.
It just tells them people out there that we're not pushing them on.
The six-year plan is unfulfilled.
The only thing we've tried to be careful with in the last four years or so, that is not having projects in the one and six that aren't realistically going to be done in one to six years, because we had some projects that have been, every year would be pushed back, it pushed back, and, and might have became mayor part of the hopeless to be more, I guess, accurate, so that people wouldn't look at this and say, oh, they're going to be doing this project in the next six years, not knowing that when it was discussed at the council meeting, they really aren't going to do it in the next six years. They did put it on the list. So we have an internal list that we, that John works on as far as ideas may be way out, way out there, and sometimes it's part of the more of a master plan. But for what's required in a one-six, we try to keep them into more or less projects like, but I would say, a good faith intent to do this project in the next year to six years is, is the goal. So that's how we try to keep this current. So as long as the intent is to do this, I don't have an issue. I just don't want people to rely on this, thinking that this road by their house is going to get paved, not realizing that there really isn't an intent to do that. Does that make sense? Is that okay?
Well, his proposal would fit in with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I would still like to make my motion to go ahead and move nineteen to the one-six.
Second.
So your motion is to move just to move the item in, we're not approving the plan? The, we're just, we're just amending it, right?
Yes, I'm amending.
Okay, so the motion is amend the plan by moving that item nineteen into the one-six.
Well, put, put it in the six-year from the chair, if that's accepted.
Okay.
Once we find out more, we can move it.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Now, is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. So unless there are any other motions for amendments or discussion, I'd entertain asking someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay, resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution number twenty fifteen dash four. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item number five is a public hearing. This is presentation and action on energy element to comprehensive plan. Welcome?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. We're here to discuss the energy element to the Seward Comprehensive Plan, because in two thousand and ten, state legislature passed O B nine-nine-seven, requiring all cities and counties to have an energy element adopted within their comprehensive plan. The Seward Energy Element was written in order to comply with state mandates. Energy elements are supposed to examine energy infrastructure and energy use by sector within the municipality, utilization of renewable energies, resources, and energy conservation measures that benefit the community. The Seward Energy Elements breaks down the energy sources that are generated for electricity for the community, wholesale by N P P D. The Energy Element examines energy use by sector within the community. It identifies opportunities for energy conservation in buildings, transportation, landscaping, and recycling, and other means. It examines renewable energy potential based off of wind, biomass, solar, and geothermal energy, and the potential for adoption within the community. Looks at opportunities to educate the public regarding energy and funding opportunities to help pay for it. It highlights the city's current efforts, including the grant from the Nebraska Energy Office in two thousand and ten to fund energy efficiency improvements in city-owned property, as well as upgrading streetlights to LED. This energy element would be adopted as an addendum to the current comprehensive plan. It would be our recommendation that should the comprehensive plan be updated in the near future, that the energy element be then integrated into the comprehensive planning document as a whole. It is a living, breathing document, just like the comprehensive plan, and can be amended as such. Hopefully, you all have copies. I have hard copies in case anyone needs any, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? And while you're looking through that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of this public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one from the public wishing to comment on this item, I will close the public comment portion of this public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments at this time? Yes.
Could you go into a little more detail on the net metering? I see that the code allows for small production facilities. What do we have existing right now in somewhere that meets that, and is doing that metering?
John, for solar energy, Seward Machine has got a solar panel installation right now. And she's doing, basically what they're doing with the, with the- We have two more businesses, and we're going to be putting solar panels out there right now.
What about residential?
We haven't had any residential so far.
But it would be allowed under the current?
It would be allowed. They could do the wind or solar.
I think the state law changed about, was it about last four or five years, to allow for net metering?
I think it was about two, two to three years, but it was basically had to do with the wind generation side of it. And N P P D said that they would allow people to go up to, I think, fifteen K W for small system. I don't see residential use as being a big boon. That limited amount of generation electricity does not pay for itself in a ten-year period. Although it does augment the system, I see the potential for solar over-.
But it could potentially offset your own, you're, you're probably not generating enough to make money.
It's kind of like collecting aluminum cans, you know?
Yeah. John, did you have something?
Yeah, my question is, is, you know, we're going to support this process, that why aren't we looking at some of our city buildings and budgeting, and trying to go get some of these grants that are out there, and show the people that this is-
Well, actually, we are. About two years ago, we did an energy audit on every single building that was under the control of the city. And we went through, we did window insulation, we did all kinds of stuff like that. We're in the process of redoing all of our streetlights from metal alloyed and, 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 uh, sodium, and we're going to convert those over to LED. We are in the process of looking for solar panels for all of our buildings to help cogenerate. And we have two cars that you'll hear about in the, in the, the report, that the city's going to be using to cut down our gas consumption and emission controls, and they're totally left. We are moving forward.
It, it would be something to look at, solar panels and show them that the city is moving forward, because it would stand out.
There is one other item. We've been approached by a company about putting up a wind generator to the south of town.
We're still getting information on whether that's something-
I don't want to get into it right now. It could be something, it could not be something.
Yeah. But just to address this point, we, we have retrofitting a number of buildings with, with more energy-efficient features, including lights, I believe, and other things. And usually with, usually you see it with new buildings, because there's a, the lead standard that you would have, that would have been their lead, you know, for, for how, how well, or how energy efficient something is. And with older buildings, it does get pretty expensive, which is why you usually look at cranks, like you said, because it's always probably, you know, it's kind of like collecting aluminum cans. I mean, there's a, it takes you a long time to, to make up the investment, so that's a good point.
So the city's great, you've been very proactive in that aspect, so that should be highlighted.
And the other question you have commented, council? Otherwise, I'd ask for someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right.
An ordinance of the City of Seward, Nebraska, to amend the comprehensive plan of the City of Seward, Nebraska, to include the energy element as prepared by J E O Consulting Group Incorporated, to provide for the repeal of ordinances inconsistent therewith, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash three. And the title is hereby approved. I give you a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted? Is read?
It's unmoved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall ordinance number twenty fifteen dash three be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, consideration of a lease agreement with Alltel Communication of Nebraska Incorporated, doing business as Verizon Wireless for placement of equipment on the city's water tower. I think we have Joe Coyle?
Joe Coyle from Perry.
Okay. You're welcome to come on out and lead your case.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. Joe Coyle, C O Y L E, three twelve B Seventh Street, Kansas City, Missouri. We have a proposal for you tonight, which is a, a lease with Verizon Wireless to place six antennas on the handrail of your water tank on North Fourth Street. Be very similar to what you see across the street here. If a, the lease would include a twenty by forty ground space for the equipment shelter. It's a twelve by thirty equipment shelter at the base of the tank. You have an existing chain link fence there now and a gravel drive. We would improve that gravel drive a bit, cut a gate in your existing fence that will allow access to Verizon technicians that would need to get in there, which, by the way, isn't very often, maybe once a month. The lease has been negotiated. I worked with Mr. Baker, no longer here, but talking with John and Mr. Babra. The lease amount that the city will receive is comparable to the other leases that you already have in place with other carriers on your tanks. And that pretty much sums it up. It's pretty straightforward. We asked for a building permit from John, have construction drawings done. Structural analysis has been done to make sure that everything is up to code, and the existing handrail can support the weight of the antennas and things of that nature. So with your support tonight, we'd like to move forward. The lease that, that we have is a Verizon Wireless standard lease. Has been reviewed by Mr. Offschneider. Verizon Wireless uses this lease specifically for water tank installations in ten states in the Great Plains region. So not much out of the ordinary there, through standard stuff, so. Any questions you might have about, you know, the operations of the site, the site plan, anything of that nature, or the lease? site plan, anything of that nature or the lease that I could, uh, if I can support you?
Okay, um, just real quick, did you have anything to add to this?
Um, one thing I have to add to this is these will be placed around the outside perimeter of the tank, will not be up on top of the tank.
And there's no structural concerns?
There's no structural concerns. We've had it reviewed by a structural engineers.
Okay. Okay.
It seems to be good.
John, is you have a question?
Yeah, for Kelly, if something would happen in the contract there, something in there about liability, that the city would not be liable for anything that could happen as far as an antenna fall over and hit something?
Right, yeah, they're required to maintain certain levels of insurance at all, work at all times.
So the city will not be held liable?
There's no associated liability to the city.
And the next thing is, you also have a house right next to that. Is anything going to cause any instructions or negativity there for visual?
Just from, I mean, just from Trent, uh, wait a second.
Has the landlord been contacted that lives next door, that you guys are doing this?
No.
Shouldn't we do that?
I don't see how it's going to affect him.
Okay, I'm just saying. Just want to make sure that we've covered all the grounds.
Well, my guess is, um, following this meeting, you're talking about Mark, right? I assume you could give Mark just a heads up that there would be some work on it, just so he's aware that the fence is going to change because there'll be a gate and there'll be people, you know, at least initially getting this set up, right? Did you do that for us?
Just common courtesy.
Yeah, no, I agree.
No, we do before we do any construction, we contact them.
Yeah, did, um, Kelly, do you have anything else to add? Are you good? Any other questions, I guess, from the council?
We've got another deal to sit the leases provision and go with a three percent increase as it goes down the line.
Anyone else? Otherwise I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Motion to approve the lease, correct?
Correct.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Turning to carry the motion, back to it, Mike, so we can see back motion first.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Uh, next item number seven, this is presentation in consideration of acceptance of auditor's report for year ended September thirtieth, twenty fourteen. I believe Ryan Berger is here this evening from Gabriel Burger and Else.
This is funny, is this, is the, do you want to display the report?
John?
Did you just try to assess the, assess the intent?
Yeah, I see the report, but the financial ratios, documents, we have that available.
I have a hard copy, I can make copies. It was in the packet.
Is it even in the packet so everyone can see it? I have my notes, so.
Yeah.
Oh, are you going to work the system for me?
Did you find what you're looking for?
I, I have the audit where I'll start, the ratios, they can use those email to them, I think, if that works. Okay, uh, Ryan Berger, seven one two zero, Whitewater Lane, Lake in Nebraska. Worked for the firm Gabriel Burger Else CPA here in Seward, and we're going over the audit. Got to meet with some various staff and everyone was very cordial. I asked a lot of questions to a lot of various employees and, uh, very receptive this year. They worked with us, it was a pretty clean, smooth process, so I'm very thankful to the employees for working with us on that. Uh, it can be as detailed or brief as you let me, so I'll lean by being brief, and if you have questions, let me know. Uh, so if we can get started, John, to, uh, in the first, pass the table of contents, page numbers are at the bottom, but we wanted to go to page two. This is page one, page two. So page one, just kind of a reminder of the audit process, there's forty-some pages in this, pages one and two, that's the auditor's job to create an opinion on the financial statements, also pages, um, thirty-eight through forty-three, where we look at your internal controls and compliance, that's our responsibility. All of the other pages are responsibility of management to prepare and, uh, and then for us to then audit. So if we go, if we scroll back up one, John, to the page two, sorry. This is our opinion, is at the top of this page, and the opinion is that the financial statements are fairly stated, uh, which is a good opinion, that's a clean opinion, we made some adjustments to get there, um, but we got there, okay? So that was our duty and we provided that opinion. If you go to page three, John, this is our balance sheet, it shows assets, liabilities, equities, uh, quick hits on this, total cash and CDs are about fifteen point nine million. That's up roughly two hundred thousand from the previous year. Total debt, um, nineteen point one million, and that leaves the rest, the forty-two point five million on the very bottom right-hand corner of this page as your equity, your net assets, if you will. Uh, just a reminder also, um, you have capital assets, fixed assets that are being depreciated, close to forty-four million dollars. So a big operation we have here with the city. If we go on to page, the next page, which is page four, it's listed sideways here, but I won't make you adjust it. It's a statement of activities, it's essentially your income statement for the city, uh, which we showed two point six million dollar change in net assets. If you were a business, that'd be called net income, but you're not a business, you're a government, so a positive change in net assets, two point six million dollars, um, this fiscal year, uh, which is good, okay? Uh, if you scroll to the next page, John. So page five, this shows our balance sheet by funds, if you will, okay? Uh, you have seventeen different governmental funds, they are presented in these three columns and totaled on this particular page. Uh, fund balances, we do not use fixed assets or long-term liabilities, we're just basically trying to get your current assets and current liabilities listed. So there's seventeen of these, a reminder, you have three utility funds, so the city has twenty total funds it's in charge of, okay? Um, one point I would like to hit, if you can go a couple pages down to page ten, cash flows, I like to follow the cash, right? And cash is really important when it comes to auditing, uh, in which we were able to reconcile cash this year again. The Assistant Treasurer, Merrill and Warner does a great job in making sure that balances every year. And you can see, this is the combined three utilities funds, they're cash flows and most of the income is generated from operations, right? A positive two million dollars, and then most of the expenses go out to paying off debts and buying fixed assets and paying off interest on loans and things of that nature, okay? That's the one point four million dollars. So there was a positive change in cash flows, and we like to see that from year to year, especially on that utility fund, we're trying to generate cash to run the utilities, okay? Uh, so that was positive this year. Any questions so far? All right, hearing none, eight pages down from that. Uh, John, we will look at some footnotes, I just want to point out a couple of things to you. One more, okay, right here, if you scroll down a little for me, John, this shows basically your cash balances, right there is perfect, and where they're held, cash, mostly checking accounts, makes up about nine point two million dollars of the assets, and this is at September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, we've been operating a couple months since then, but this is the fiscal year end, and then about six point six million, almost six point seven million are in CDs earning interest, total interest earned this particular fiscal year was a little over sixty-four thousand dollars, okay? Um, there's also mention on this page of the levy that you have, if you remember, in this fiscal year, we're at three, two, four, four was the levy. The levy you just set for the year that we're currently in, um, was point three one eight zero, that's a decrease in city levy of one point nine, almost two percent, okay? From the current year that you're in, all right? So if we continue to scroll down to pages twenty-one. For you guys, if you ever have, looking back, want to know what does our fixed assets look like, use pages twenty-one and twenty-two. This is the ones for government, this is all your fixed assets for government, capital assets, and the next page is by utilities, okay? So your business type, which is utilities, and now you can see what we have is being depreciated, what's in progress, what we have in buildings, equipment and things of that nature is broken out, use these two pages as your reference point for fixed assets, okay? Uh, the next page, page twenty-three, uh, right at the top here, I think if we scroll up a little bit on that one, John, uh, yeah, scroll up, go back up a little, I just want to show you, this is, uh, got our debt, it's focusing on debt, you're good right there. Just so you know, debt on all of the interest expense, so we talked about your income from your CDs and checking is about sixty-four thousand dollars for the year. Um, interest expense on all of your debt across all utilities and other governments was about, uh, just shy of four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars this year, okay? So some things to consider if we're planning during the year. Um, if you have a project that you don't have to bond, and we mentioned this a little bit last year, you know, your expense is outpacing your interest income, but at the same time, what does that debt do? It spreads the payments out over many years, so frees up cash flow, but on certain smaller projects, if you don't need to bond it, you can go to work by paying off a debt, it's going to save you dollars, a lot more than putting it away for one percent or less than one percent interest earned, if that makes sense, right? So that's something to consider as you're making policy decisions going forward, yeah?
Ryan, is there somewhere in the document that, as far as our cash balances that we have, what of that is spendable versus what is restricted?
Yeah, that's a really good question because on the initial balance sheet, it says what is quote, you know, in restricted, what is restricted or reserved funds, um, and obviously there's a lot of bond reserves that you're required to have, um, but essentially what we discovered during this process, um, is if you go to that, do we want to go to the page? Let's, let's go to the page. Um, if you go all the way back to page three, it has our, our balance sheet. It's a good question, important one, uh, because I want everyone to understand it. Because some of your cash is not readily spendable, as people try to keep reminding me, I say, oh, look at all this cash, you can't always spend it all, you have reserves. So if John has it up here, um, scroll up a little bit, you have it perfect. Yep, okay, right here, oh, okay. So there's a line that says restricted assets, cash and cash equivalents, and then CDs. All right, so the middle column is your utilities, there's about one point nine million there and about one point five in CDs. Most, all of that money is actually restricted for a purpose, like you're bonded indebtedness and you would not have access to that cash. The government, to the left of it, has about nine hundred thousand dollars and then a fifteen thousand dollar CD. What we've discovered during our audit is most of that money is in a, in an account at a bank that says restricted on it, but it's not, we can't readily determine what the actual restriction is for, okay? So there's a, a good chunk of those funds, I would estimate eight hundred thousand dollars of that cash that is not truly restricted for a bond purpose. So if you do some fast math up there, I said you have fifteen point nine million dollars of cash, and so it looks like about three point four of it, three point five of it truly cannot be used, it has purposes by being held assigned for bond covenants and things of that nature, bond reserve, okay? The rest, I would say, is part of your free cash flow. I mean, you know, you want to keep some reserves in place, you don't want to get crazy with it, but those are your true restrictions, at least on paper. Does that make sense? Great question.
The amount you said that is restricted, uh, in the, is that the nine thirty-seven, three fifty-five? That's restricted?
So those are in accounts that are described as restricted at the bank, but we, during our time, we did not truly see an actual restriction for like a bond covenant for that. What's that?
What do you need to do with it? I mean, re- reclassify it or?
Right, well, we could reclassify it, we could see, is this part of a reserve cash ratio, is this, is this being seen or viewed as an emergency fund for a rainy day, you know, that, that true restriction over that money, it, it's in that account and, and I didn't feel comfortable moving it out of that account, um, because that's the city's decision, management's decision, so I feel they are in restricted accounts. Uh, what you want to do with those funds, uh, is, that's management's decision, that's why I just need to audit.
Ryan, to be clear then, when we talk about having a certain reserve percentage, whether it's twenty-five or thirty percent, is that, that's different than this number?
Yeah, it's a little bit different, but you can see some of these funds could be used towards that.
So, but the point is that we still have that reserve in place. This number does not impact that number, unless you want it to, you could either add it to that if you wanted to, or you could use it for something else.
Yeah, when we calculate a reserve, that's truly just budgeting for an amount above costs for the year, has nothing to do with the account it's sitting in at a certain bank.
And, and a lot of that reserve also deals with cash flow, because we don't get all of the revenue at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Right, exactly.
It comes in, you get to be able to, but the, but the bills come in, but the revenue doesn't always follow right away. Yes, Charles?
Well, why do you, is best practices for a percentage of reserve for the types of things you asked, talking about?
You get this question all the time and?
I think we asked this question, didn't we?
You know, historically, you've been hovering in the twenty to twenty-five percent zone, which I'm very comfortable with. Um, some people would say you would want more, some would say put your money to work and use a lower reserve, um, you know, we revisit that every budget session, um, I'm comfortable with the twenty to twenty-five percent range that you've been using.
And currently we are at?
You, this year we use a twenty-five percent, that's what we budgeted for, so.
But we can have a year where the digester or something goes out and then we kind of look for something.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, and, and that's not, I mean, kind of look at it like, you know, you, you can have, I, I guess you don't have, I would look at it like if you had a specific project, not an ongoing expense, and you wanted to use that as sort of a rainy day fund, with, within reason, you could probably go into that, and then maybe for a year or two, um, it drops down the percentage wise, but the, but the intent is to build it back up. You don't want to keep reading the piggy bank and then not putting any money back, otherwise you're not going to have a reserve, and of course, that's usually when it really starts to rain. So that's kind of, I mean, so yeah, of course, very specific, um, expenditures and, and I would argue should be emergency type expenditures, is definitely available and you'll be glad to have it, so. But you can also, I mean, I think part of the discussion we had too, is if there is, if there are, are, um, bonds out there, that would, that would make sense to, to, you know, um, pay them off ahead of time, you know, that could also be a use for either this fund, this money, or for that money, with the idea that you're paying it off and then you can rebuild the fund. So, or bond less.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, where rates are at on our bonds right now, it's like the next one million dollar street project, do we bond a million dollars or do we bond half of it and pay for the other half in cash? You know, if, if you dug through that, uh, bond table that was set out, sent out, I mean, our highest percentage on a bond right now is four percent. You know, did, in my opinion, do we probably make some mistakes in the past when we bonded fifty thousand and ninety thousand? I mean, that, that ninety thousand dollar bond we did, i- is costing us thirty-three thousand dollars to have it, you know? You know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, that was a learning process for me as a councilman, that was probably a dumb bond we did. So, and that's why I wanted to review what cash is out there, what can be spent. Because we, we should probably be a little bit smart moving forward here, and when we got bonds sitting out there at the rates we do, let them ride. Let, let's pay attention to what we're going to be bonding moving forward, and, and maybe not bond as much and spend a little cash for some of that.
Yeah, that's just my. When this group gets to budget time, what I'd like to have you see is budget, we always budget for fixed assets, that's the biggest thing, always the biggest earmark thing. I'd like to see a budget for items that we plan on bonding and items we think we're going to do, pay cash for, and then you really have a sense for what you're going to do, put your money to work. I think we're doing, I think we're doing a great job, I think it's continually improving and getting better is, is the focus here, so. Thank you for your points. Um, just for your own notes, um, pages twenty-six, page twenty-six of this, our report shows your details of your debt as it's becoming due, of course, when you refund and refinance, that changes from year to year, um, but, but that particular page has that information if you want to see details on debt. Page twenty-seven has, um, your TIF loans that are being repaid back as we go, in fact, John's got the list of them right here, so you can see TIF. you can see TIF, uh, the balances as they're being paid off as we go, that are in place again as of September thirty, two thousand fourteen, okay? Um, page thirty-four is a balance sheet for the utility funds, okay? And one, I think, question or idea or concept that came up is, okay, so we have some debt, right, guys? Um, especially in the utilities funds, how is it portioned among electric, water, wastewater? And if you look at, um, the long-term debt, which is on this page, and the current maturities of the long-term debt, combining those numbers for electric, it's five point four million, for water, four point seven million, for wastewater, four point two million, okay? So, um, obviously, the most debt you carry is on the utilities side, and that's how it's spread amongst electric, water, and wastewater, five point four, four point seven, four point two, okay? So that's where the debt of those funds sit, uh, at that particular time. Okay, um, could we go four more pages to page thirty-eight, if we will? Um, and if you scroll up, uh, page thirty-eight and thirty-nine shows our report on internal controls, which we have some findings, um, and then our report on compliance, which we found no issues of non-compliance this fiscal year. Um, you've seen the listing of findings, do we wanna spend time on this, on the findings, council, mayor, or?
Are there, are you talking to any questions at this point?
How many findings from last year to this year?
How many findings?
Does he have, how many last year?
Well, there was technically eighteen findings broken up into multiple steps.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this year, there was thirteen findings broken up into multiple steps, there was a reduction in findings, yes, and the amounts that are making it to the report, um, have increased a little bit this year, because I find them important to rising to the level to be on the report.
So what are the findings, how would you rate them, serious or non-serious?
Right, so, as, as much detail as you want to go into that, councilman, I would, I would ask that we could meet and discuss that, if you wanted to. Um, every, every finding to an auditor is important. Um, which ones create, cause for concern, or, or, are important, or, I don't know, I wouldn't use the word emergency, but require your attention? I feel like we've listed the six here that are important. Uh, the problem with that is the very first one, segregation of duties, a lot of small towns have that, right? One person can have access to all of the funds, uh, that's common. It doesn't mean to me it's not important, to me, it's extremely important, okay? Um, what are you going to do about it, well, management has their response, they're reviewing the issue, weighing the benefits of hiring an additional person to help get, separate out the duties versus the cost of what it takes to, you know, bring another person in.
And, and that was one of, I wonder responses to a number of these, was that there is a position that we are going to be filling once we have the signature position filled, and that will, uh, address a number of those types of issues, just because, um, we're, we're, and I think, and we're compared a lot of communities, we're, we're, we're short one person, more or less, for, for the most part, and so, it's hard to do as much cross-training as the auditor would like, and it's hard to have, um, the separation of duties as much as the auditor would like, but I think with that position in place, it will, I mean, you can agree or disagree, I don't know, but I think it would address, it should address a lot of those concerns.
Have to use appropriately, if it could or should address some of the concerns. Um, couple of things, councilman, I saw that particularly stood out is, I would, as you can see in these findings, I would really like to see grants, that, the operating, who's in charge of getting grants going, getting the money back, issuing them, researching them, tracking them financially? You know, we need a point guard on grants, that's just, gotta have it, okay? And another issue that arose was on the risk management side, you know, how many meetings did we have about independence landing, independence landing, independence landing? And it rose the question, what were the costs involved, and how was the, how was it insured? And came to find out the property casualty was not in place over that particular project after it was donated to the city at that point in time, and again, that rises to a level where I would be a little concerned, which is why you find it in the report this fiscal year, so. I think many issues could be addressed, uh, but I'm not, I'm not going to tell you what to do with your finances and hiring, or anything of that nature, but if, if it could.
But you'll tell us if we don't do a good job, right?
I'll tell you if you're not doing a good job, yeah. So, many things are positive this year, many improvements over our first year of our audit, very pleased in that regard. Um, still have some suggestions, uh, to go, so.
Any other questions, I guess, for Ryan at this point? You're good.
Is there any of these findings out there that would cause anybody to be concerned, and even potentially cause a, an audit, from an outsourcer?
Um, any findings that we found that would cause you to be audited by a different, by an outside? Um, are you, I guess, to clarify, are you talking about like, on a federal department of labor level, or a criminal level? Or, or what are we talking about? 'Cause if, if you're asking for criminal, default to Mr. Hofschneider, and if, if it's on a federal department of labor level, I, I would have no, no understanding of that, that concept.
I just wanna make sure that there's nothing there that would be that extreme, or it would cause a external audit.
So, here's, I'll give you an example, nothing directly, but the first finding is separation of duties, so if someone starts stealing money, and you're unable to be aware of that or discover that in a timely fashion, that would cause a problem. So, um, nothing directly that we saw, however, there are things in place that could cause you problems, um, if, if they're not addressed appropriately, so.
And I would suggest going through and reading the responses, um, from the administration, if you have any additional questions, just give us a call, give Ryan a call, and we can elaborate further on that.
Do we wanna do the financial ratios, did you get that in your, in your packet? Do you wanna discuss those briefly, try to be brief?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we don't have that up on this page for public to see, but you have the financial ratios. Um, uh, again, your, your ratios show on one of the first pages that, uh, you're qualifying some of the metrics that we look at with governmental entities, if you look at the first actual chart, it's property tax, um, per population, and per certified valuation, what you can see, your property tax levels based on the size, um, it's extremely competitive. Um, really, the only one bringing the average way, way down is our friends in York, um, who have a large source of sales tax revenue, so they don't need to issue as much property tax. Other than York, I think we beat everyone else in our peer group, uh, both by population and by valuation, okay? So that's very, that's a very positive sign. The next chart, I think, is the debt by population, um, which would out, which on the charts outpaces the average and is one of the higher ones, um, as Mr. Vabre pointed out to me, though, not every city in the peer group has their own even utility, all, all of their electric, for instance, that not all of them have all three utilities, and so, it's hard to know apples to apples where we really sit, uh, as far as debt goes, so I think the bottom line is, um, debt by population appears to be high, but, um, it's being invested in infrastructures, which help you so you don't have to spend even more to get in compliance, um, with those infrastructures down the road. So, always manage your debt, uh, and look at it, I think we're in a pretty good financial position where we sit right now, so. Any questions on the graphs and ratios?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, what, Ryan's ready to answer?
Uh, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, any other questions, I guess, in general for, for Ryan? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to accept the auditor's report for a year ending September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Move it.
Leave a motion in a second. Jason Barford will do it. Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the auditor's report, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thanks, Ryan. Item number eight is the library annual report, Becky Baker.
I've given you all of our copy of the annual report, along with some candy that I hope you've been enjoying this evening, so, blah, blah. If the picture's worth a thousand words, you've got a two-hundred-page book in front of you, because it's almost all pictures. We started the year with, uh, opening at our lower level, and ended it with, uh, construction of a parking lot to the east of the library. Just so you know, we have no future construction plans in the future, so, um. The last page of numbers is what's required by the state to review, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? No interactive game this year?
Well, it's already eight twenty.
Ah, okay, alright. If there's no questions, we entertain a motion to accept the annual report from the library.
Move her through.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you, thank you, Becky. Um, item number nine, consideration of claim from Connie Seitzinger, uh, at eight forty-eight North Sixth Street for personal property damage. Jack, did you wanna take this?
Uh, yes, we received a claim for property damage at that address, uh, due to a backup, uh, water in the basement, and we would recommend that, uh, we forward this to our insurance agent, uh, YMC, and, uh, get their opinion on it, see if we have any liability there.
Where's the amount, again?
Uh, I'm sorry, don't have that.
Okay. Eleven thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars, eighty-four cents, I have, okay? Okay, and there any questions for Jack? Um, is Connie here?
Yes.
Did you wanna speak?
Um.
Brad, anything to add?
No, I think that was the right amount, it was all care, it was over ten thousand, and then mine is a thousand forty-four.
Okay. Any other que, yes?
So, the way to do this, we would want to deny, so we go to the insurance's.
Yeah, yes, I believe the council would, the fall of recommendation, the council would deny the claim, and then submit it to the insurance company, they would then review the claim and make a determination.
That's what I would agree to, deny and move.
Your, your motion then is to deny the claim and submit to the insurance company?
Yep.
Um, leave a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Alright. Item number ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are all related. Um, these are the lease agreements, the farm lease agreements, um, and Kelly, did you wanna?
Sure.
Take each one of these, and then we can do a motion on each one separately? I assume for fourteen, can we do all three parcels at once?
I think that's fine, yes, so. We did, we did it different this year with the farm leases, uh, last summer, I think you directed me to take this to an auction, so, we had conducted a farm lease auction on Friday, February sixth, uh, at ten AM here in these, uh, chambers. Uh, we publish notice of the auction, uh, once a week for three consecutive weeks in the, uh, sewer newspaper. Um, I have the results summarized, we had good, good attendance, good turnout. Um, to summarize, we increased our total annual rents by six thousand eight hundred nine dollars and eighty cents. That's a thirty-two percent increase from our two thousand fourteen crop year, so it was, uh, worth the time to actually put these out, uh, for auction this year.
And Kelly, if I could add, I, I believe these are one-year leases, and we had talked about, and I had had some of the farmers contact me wanting to know about, uh, for them, it's, it's easier to have a multiple-year lease, just because they're also taking care of the ground, and to know that they have it for a certain number of years, but you know, this was the first time we had done this, we did the one year, but you have a couple of options, you can either, after this one year, do this again, and then, uh, ex- extend it for a period of three years or whatever you think's appropriate, otherwise, we can just, it would automatically renew. So if you wanted to, if you felt like the, the market's about the same, you could just let it roll over for another year or two, so essentially, you'd have a three-year, if you wanted to do it that way, you just, it would just be like your, like the lease on your apartment back in college, if you don't do anything, it just rolls over to a month by month, or in this case, a year by year lease, until either party wanted to, um, basically renegotiate.
Yeah, so right, right now, the way the leases are drafted is, um, there is a hold, a holdover provision, so unless, uh, either the city or the farm tenants give notice that, uh, they're going to terminate the, the farm lease by August thirty-one of this year, because this is for the two thousand fifty crop year, then it would automatically hold over until, until the next year, so. There are some, there are some producers that, uh, don't like the uncertainty of a three-year, so there are some that do want the one-year, so. The council can give me direction later on this summer, as we get closer to that August thirty-one deadline, if you wanna, uh, do the same process again next year, or renegotiate.
And if prices kinda stabilize, maybe it's not a big of a deal, we saw a pretty big jump here in the last few years, John, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just feel like I can bring back this in July, you know, if you read the papers, and if you read the outlooks, you know, what are they looking at, a thirty-seven percent decrease in ag, uh, you know, here in the next year? So, you know, it might be something we really look at pretty hard in July.
So, the, uh, the farm leases, they're on the agenda separated out by, uh, by the actual farm tenants, uh, all. We have a total of, uh, we have a total of seven parcels, three, seven parcels. Uh, each lease agreement does have, uh, the same general terms in it, other than, uh, the actual, uh, uh, lease, lease amounts, but all the other terms of those lease agreements aren't the same, so.
So I guess on item number ten, is there any discussion, and I don't know if any of the, does anyone here, are any of the parties here? Okay, in case they wanted to say anything, so, uh, we'll start with number ten, is there any, are there any questions or comments from the council?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for approval, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Number eleven, this is with Chris Beckler.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Number twelve, this is with Marlon Louie.
Move approval.
Right.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Number thirteen, this is with John Heath.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. And number fourteen, this is for parcels listed as A, B, and C, which are numbered as parcels one, two, and three.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item fifteen, consideration of approval of bid specification for one new ambulance. Did you wanna speak on this?
Yeah, I mean, everything's in order, um, Alex had me put it on the agenda, they're pretty much duplicating from the squad that we got prior, um, so I would say that Kelly says everything's in order, that we wanna go ahead and approve this, we go out for bids.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, I have Connie Langland, what they have eighty-hundred, jury at Seward, rescue lieutenant.
And Alex Golden, here as our rescue captain.
So we're just seeking approval to go out for bids for this, uh, new squad, you know, we're running, we ran over five hundred calls last year, which is, I think, an all-time record for us here in Seward, and that's our city squad that we're looking at replacing, so.
Okay.
We just like to go out for bids.
Are there any other questions, or comments from the council?
Did you say anything wrong?
Oh, I have concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
If the council had any other questions or comments, otherwise I entertain a motion.
I'll move.
We have a motion.
To approve.
To approve this bid, the bid specification for one new ambulance. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Hope it was worth the wait.
It was. Thanks, guys.
Have a good night. Item sixteen, this is discussion and action of wage and benefit comprehensive study. Uh, Jack, did you want to come up and kind of talk about this a little bit?
Uh, because of the, uh, turnover, I think, in city, uh, the employees increases that normally come out on December first, have not, uh, employees have not gotten any increase this year. Bonnie spent a lot of time doing a survey, working with Sheila Shukai off of Norfolk, who does these, um, these, uh, ser- pay surveys as a part-time job. This year, the survey indicated that all cities that we compare with, uh, receive pay increases of between two and two and a half percent. Uh, the lowest was one and a half percent, the highest was three percent. And this is a sidelight. The state of Nebraska gave their employees two point two five percent. So we are recommending that all employees get a cost of living raise of two percent effective December first of last year. So we, uh, do part of that retroactive. One of the things that Bonnie and I did discuss is pay ranges and the pay scales that we have now. The way I see it done is you have pay ranges of maybe five, six, seven steps, and there's a same percentage difference between each pay range. And then there's a percentage difference between step within those pay ranges. And those are the same. Let's say they're all five percent, uh, in each range, five percent in each step. So when an employee moves, uh, they move to a step. What we have now in, in sewers, some of these things somehow got compressed where they have more, uh, steps and their difference between the steps isn't the same in the same pay range. So you say it should be two and a half percent steps within that pay range. Some of these have more than, uh, steps and others do, and, and they're maybe not two and a half percent. Maybe they're one and a half percent. So I think during the intervening time between now and next December first, the city should, uh, take a look at those and create a step and pay range classification and stick everybody in one of those steps. Too many times, they've formed a, uh, pay scale just for a particular job. And what Bonnie and I would see is that we have a pay scale, uh, that somebody is assigned to depending on where they should be paid. Kind of sounds complex, but it's really not. Do you have any questions on?
Is the hope then?
Kind of understand what we're doing.
Is the hope then that moving forward, um, rather than doing it across the board, we can be more targeted by having, uh, the, this type of a process?
You can give a one percent and change everything by one percent. The steps, the, the pay scales, so it, it, it'll all fit. It'll all be changed at one time.
Okay.
What, what, what drives the process of moving from step to step from the city state? I mean, military, I know how it works. I got a rank change, I got a step change. How does that?
The, uh, the pay range is fixed based on what you, if you're a police sergeant, you're, you're in pay range thirty, I would say. But then those pay ranges and those steps within that can be changed by inflation, cost of living. But if, if this, this person gets promoted, they just get moved to a different pay scale.
Right. Let's say I'm, I'm within this, uh, I'm, I'm a sergeant, and I'm in this pay range. I'm being paid currently at, at step three of seven steps. How do I get to step four?
Generally, that's, uh, earned, uh, to start at step one, but maybe actually starting salary, maybe after six months, uh, you may get an increase.
Is that council-driven or is that direct supervisor-driven?
Oh, that, those increases within the range are driven by the supervisor. So generally, it tells you how often a person can be evaluated, usually annually. Uh, so if they're in step three of pay range fifty and, uh, they do a good job, uh, they qualify for an increase. They would go to the next step.
Chris, um, Bonnie, would you want to?
Currently, all of the, um, step increases are done on April one, following two semi-annual evaluations. So all employees have to meet their evaluation, um, and there's two. Like I said, every six months, we do it. Um, their total combined score is put together, and if they meet, um, a hundred percent of their goals that were established and they're, we call them targets, then they're moved to the next step until they reach step nine. At that time, there's a process or a calculation for giving step nine, uh, employees a, like a one-time bonus is what it's called for meeting their evaluation.
Any other questions, Jack?
On step nine, that one-time bonus is just one year, one time, one year, not every year?
Every year.
Every year.
Okay. But it doesn't affect their, their base pay.
Sometimes step changes are associated with like supervisory capability, uh, whether or not they're like a foreman or if they're a, um, street supervisor or if their, their duties increase, um, could be, uh, in line with some, like for instance, in the street department, when they first come in, they don't have a CDL license. They, they're restricted on the amount of duties that they can perform. They, once they get that CDL license, that would figure into a possible step change.
I probably got a topic, but it's just something that Personnel Committee is going to be discussing in the future here.
Oh, okay.
And so I, I was just trying to glean a little info while we were talking about it, and may, maybe I just need to wait till our meeting and have you guys there. I won't, I won't waste our time.
I believe my saying is, is that it's, it's, it's based, with the exception of the COLA adjustments, you, you're based on performance and how the evaluations are, 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 have, whether you meet the targets in evaluations.
Currently, it's set up for one year between each step. We have total nine steps. Um, some cities do, you know, six months and then you get an increase. And then as you get toward the end of their steps, maybe there's two years between or something like that. But ours is one year between each step is the way it's set up.
I mean, my only concern is, and obviously I'm in the private sector, so, you know, I got a cost of living increase, two percent. Well, if we have employees who are getting a cost of living increase of two percent, and then they're also getting bumped in steps, are we giving them a seven percent increase?
Yes.
So that's my concern.
Yeah, this, this whole thing is driven by comparability.
I know it's driven from.
Bandated basically by the state of Nebraska.
Okay, I'm the senator. I'll make a change.
Do you, you mentioned the variability between steps in terms of the increase. Is, is that something you intend to rectify by the end of the year?
I think that's something that should be, not this year, not for this year, but for next year, I think, ought to be looked at, so, uh, so things are done the same in each one. And if you have a pay range where every step is three percent part, and then you've got another one that's got more in there and maybe it's only one and a half percent part, it should be consistent.
Is that a council action or is that just something you do administratively?
That would come through the council. Anything having to do with the changes of pay and those pay ranges would come to the council. And I would assume that it would just be done, uh, next year during this, prior to December first, uh, when any raise, if there is any, would be needed.
Though, one other thing that, um, is that the minimum wage change is federal and state of Nebraska. I bumped up. We're proposing an increase of the, that the only pay lines affected were lifeguards and swimming instructors, um, starting them at eight dollars an hour so that we meet the minimum wage. Although I believe because they're recreation and, um, they're not full-time, so to speak, we don't run that operation all year. We wouldn't have to do that. But we're going to run into possibly competing, um, with some other businesses, and you may have a difficult time filling those lifeguard positions if they can find other jobs that would pay them to eight dollars.
Are there any other questions or, um, for Jack or comments from the council?
Well, I think there is some newer councils here that need to know how the process works. I, I think it would help Ellen and, and some of the newer ones too, that were kind of held to the gun, um, because of the comparability and the league. It's frustrating.
Yeah, and we've had this discussion for a number of years because with the comparability being in statute and also with the CIR changes that have happened in the last couple of years, um, there isn't a lot of flexibility of regarding the framework. Within the framework, you have some give, but you still have to fall within the general comparability, uh, framework. And so you are, it, you are basically, um, your decisions are going to be influenced by whether communities, your size, that fit within your array. And sometimes those communities in your array, um, don't make sense, um, it, to you because they, whatever the reason is, and, and, uh, and sometimes you wonder, well, why is this city or town in our array? And I could tell you, like, for example, speaking, speaking with the, the mayor of Crete, they'd like to compare to us. Well, we're in the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area, so they can't compare with us, even though we're roughly the exact same size of community. And so some of those things seem very counterintuitive, like, well, why wouldn't they? Well, because the law says so, which isn't, it's almost as bad as because we've always done it that way. But the law says so, and so, um, my hope would be is that taking, um, these issues that Jack has brought up, be able to go with to the Personnel, um, Committee and have a recommendation of, to consider what that might look like within the, the, the confines of the, uh, overall statute. Is that fair, Jack?
I think Personnel Committee involvement would be very good.
Okay.
I'd move for approval for the recommendation.
Okay, this is an ordinance, so I need to introduce the ordinance, okay? An ordinance to provide for classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compen- of compensation shall become effective to provide for publication in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty fifteen dash four, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with that. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash four. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. The question is, shall ordinance number twenty fifteen dash four be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Uh, this is the last ordinance for the evening. I will need one final motion to make the ordinances a part of the permanent record.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. Please display the votes. Oh, register your votes. Now display the votes. Thank you. Uh, next, item seventeen, uh, this is consideration of real estate option and access agreement with Phyllis May Eggerer and.
Sure, yeah, I'll take this. This is, uh, one of the parcels out of the rail site, uh, proposed rail site campus. This particular parcel is, has a, uh, this, this is one of the option agreements, uh, for the parcels out there, uh, set to expire on the twenty-seventh. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, trying to negotiate an extension of this option. Uh, we are in that process right now and, uh, would, I guess, recommend that the council, uh, request a motion to go into closed session to provide some negotiation guidance to myself on, uh, negotiating that option and, and/or, uh, considering, uh, exercising, uh, that option to purchase. Uh, I have some prescribed language here for a motion if somebody would like to read that. And this is for, uh, uh, the, the legal description for the parcel. It is located in section twenty-nine Township eleven North, Range three East, and I have that in motion.
I move that the city council go into closed session with the city attorney for the protection of the public interest and in order to engage in a strategy session and to provide real estate negotiating guidance to the city attorney with respect to the option and access agreement between Phyllis Eggerer and the city of Seward for a parcel of real estate located in section twenty-nine Township eleven North, Range three East of the sixth PM, city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska.
Say.
We have a motion in a second. And, and you're including all the council members?
Yep, city council members and the city attorney.
And the mayor?
The mayor's not listed, but we can sure add the mayor.
And probably the city administrator?
I would add that to the motion. The first and the second is called.
And for how long were you thinking?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes? At the most.
Say.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Ready to read this again?
Yeah.
The motion, just to read the motion again, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, so the purpose of the session is for the city council and those listed to go into closed session with the city attorney for the protection of the public interest in order to engage in a strategy session to provide real estate negotiating guidance to the city attorney with respect to the option and access agreement between Phyllis Eggerer and the city of Seward for a parcel of real estate located in section twenty-nine Township eleven North, Range three East of the sixth PM, city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.